Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming in this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. At this time, would you please stand for the invocation that will be given by my pastor, Reverend Gregory Yancey Senior of New Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, how are you, sir?
Fine, Honorable Mayor. Good evening and to the City Council. Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come, Lord, thank you yet for another day. Thank you, Lord, as you allow us to come, Lord, at the table again to handle those matters and concerns of this historic city. Father, we pray now that you would lead and guide, you would instruct even the more. Father, we pray that you bless every voice that hath to be spoken. Let it be heard, but yet, Lord, let decision be made, that, Lord, that we benefit for the historic city. God, we give you thanks and we give you praise, for it in Jesus' name. Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much Reverend Yancey. Members of Council, please indicate your presence electronically.
Six members of City Council are present.
All right, thank you. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of March 24th, 2014, a call meeting of March 25th, 2014, and a regular meeting of March 25th, 2014, and a public work session on March 31st of 2013. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
With adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, six zero.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light, and at the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing. 14-142, Public Hearing on a Use Permit Application, UP 1402. West Haven Park, G. Eric Doring with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated on behalf of Wawa is requesting a use permit to construct a convenience store with gas sales at 1098 Frederick Boulevard. The property is owned by Walmart Real Estate Business Trust and is designed on the comprehensive plans generalized future land use map for commercial development. The property is located in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. Vision principle: A robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Sure, how are you?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Jonathan Hartley, Planning Administrator with the City Planning Department. This is a request for a use permit which is required by the zoning ordinance for any convenience store with gasoline. This particular proposal is for a Wawa at 1098 Frederick Boulevard. The proposed site is located in the southeast corner of the Walmart on Frederick Boulevard, at the corner of Frederick Boulevard and Scott Street. The site is zoned GMU, and the surrounding area is commercial and industrial to the northeast and west. To the south, it's zoned urban residential, as shown on the map on the right. This is an aerial photo of the site. The proposed site is outlined in yellow with the yellow star in it. This is, this site is actually opposite the new Kroger marketplace that's being built on the old Norcom High School site, and the proposal prohibits, or is set up so that it doesn't have any direct access to Frederick Boulevard. This is actually a photograph of the site. It is already improved as part of the parking lot at Walmart, currently used mainly for parking of semi-tractor trailers, particularly in this photo. This is a photo of Frederick Boulevard looking east towards the Chick-fil-A. This next photo is, is a photo of the intersection of Scott Street and Frederick Boulevard, and it includes a number of the residences that are, would be directly adjacent to the proposed Wawa, and those residences are zoned U R. They have been there for many years, and the site that the Wawa is going on has been commercial for many, many years. Again, as I indicated, it's across the street from the proposed Kroger marketplace, which is now under construction, as you can kind of see from this site. And then you have the Walmart where the Wawa is actually proposed. This last photo is a, is a photo of the conceptual plan for the Wawa, and you have a copy of this in your, in your packet, as well as copies of the elevation of the, of the buildings that's proposed. You'll also note in the staff report, there is some financial information in terms of how much revenue is anticipated to the city from this proposal. Some around the order of $200,000, $250,000 in sales tax and real estate tax, plus additional taxes that could be collected on other items. The P C, the Planning Commission considered this item at their meeting in March and recommended approval seven to nothing with the conditions in the staff report, and those conditions essentially tie the proposal to the conceptual plan that's on the screen and the renderings in your packet. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'll try to answer any questions. Mr. Doring is here on behalf of the applicant, if you have questions of him.
Any questions? Any discussion on the light at that corner, the red light that we're talking about there?
Yes.
Where are we at with that?
There is a light that will be installed by Kroger at this point. When a traffic study was done, it was determined that Kroger actually needed to install a light. We had a similar study done by Wawa, and based on the city engineer's evaluation of that, it was determined that Wawa did not require a light independent of Kroger.
Okay.
And I think the city engineer is here, if you have additional questions.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important to let the public know that the store is projected to generate about $200,000 annually in taxes, so that'll certainly help the city coffers.
Absolutely.
And I want to thank staff for including that information in the application as well.
Members of Council, again, the applicant is available, if you have questions. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 14-02. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, six zero. New business, 14-143, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of Council, there are no boards and commissions to announce tonight. As always, we are in need of volunteers. You can see the list of openings and upcoming openings that we have by going to our website. There's also a Boards and Commissions Manual on our website that explains what each of those boards or commissions do. So if you see something you're interested in, you can also submit an application online, or you can do it by contacting the Clerk's office, but would love to have you volunteer for our city.
14-144, Items Submitted by Council Members.
Okay. First of all, let me say happy equal payday. Today is being recognized as, that's right, equal payday, and as was stated out of Washington, today is equal payday, which symbolizes when more than three months into this year, women's wages finally catches up to men were paid in the previous year. So right now, women average, still average only about 77 cents for every dollar, which is a disgrace, and we all need to be working to improve that. And so with that, I want to ask Madam Clerk, if we can, we've got a very exciting weekend coming up with our pretty up Portsmouth, and I'm gonna ask Donna if she will come in and enlighten us all on, on just how we're staged for this weekend and make sure everybody is a part of that. Speaking of equal pay, you can address that too, if you'd like, yeah.
Okay, I'm willing to accept more money.
How you doing?
Okay, good evening. Exciting times this Saturday in Portsmouth, with the Great American Cleanup. We've got a household hazardous waste collection, document shredding, electronics recycling event going on in the Craddock neighborhood. It's open to all Portsmouth residents, nine to noon, so this is a good time to get rid of your paint cans, your insecticides, things that you're just not really sure what you should do with, electronics, computers, TVs. This is a great time for that. And then documents shredding, Stealth will be there offering safe and secure document shredding. While that is going on, we're also gonna have about 150 people picking up litter throughout Portsmouth. We've got volunteers from the Norfolk Naval Shipyard, faith-based communities, civic leagues, individuals, families. We've just got a whole group of people that are willing to get out to pick up litter and tidy up this, this beautiful city to make it even more lovely. So we hope people will come out. If you want to pick up litter and you haven't volunteered yet, you can still come out on Saturday morning. We'll be right down here beside City Hall. We'll have a tent up, so you'll be able to find us. We'll pass out litter grabbers, and I'll, we'll send you on your way to give you a little assignment to pick up litter. We'll provide litter grabbers, safety vests, and plastic bags. So we hope people will come out this weekend, and we're gonna also pray for a lovely day. It's always better when it's not raining. So come on out, nine to noon in Craddock, to drop off your household hazardous waste, documents, or electronics, or if you want to pick up litter, be down here at City Hall at nine o'clock.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Very good. And let me just say on a serious note, I, about this whole equal pay and the diversity issue, I spoke about a week and a half ago over at Regent University along with the other mayors, and this was the topic that I chose to speak about, because again, this region, Hampton Roads, 1.7 million people, is 51% female out of 1.7 million people, and we're 40% minority, and within that group, 32.2% of those are African-American. So we're one of the most diverse regions in this country, and we continue to talk about what are the different things that's keeping people from coming to this region, new business, startups, and things of that nature. So I decided to take a different slant at it, because again, it is noticeable around this country. The places and the regions one can go where those things aren't that big of a factor, and we need to overcome that. I think I opened my speech up talking about if you want something done right, and on time and on budget, what do you do? And they all stared at me, and I said, "You hire a woman." And so they all started laughing, and it led into my comments. But, but again, I, I still think our greatest strength lies within our diversity, and the sooner we embrace that, the sooner we'll start seeing a whole lot of other things come out of those types of initiatives, because it's, again, it's important, not only in our hiring practices, but also in our subcontracting practices and, and the whole gamut. So again, and when you look at the demographics and look at how we rank nationwide, I mean, this region is about 36th to 39th place as a region in this country, but when it comes to minorities and diversity, we're in the top 10. And so the sooner we embrace that, the better. And speaking of women, I had the great privilege today to attend the change of command ceremony for Admiral Elaine Wagner over at Portsmouth Naval Medical Center. She's been here for 30 months. She's heading up now to DC. She has been a magnificent leader of that facility. She came here, she replaced Admiral Stocks. She embraced a lot of the things that he had done here in the community and, and went a step further. I think most of you know, she came when we had our kickoff, our Healthy Portsmouth Initiative, and brought about 50 of her junior officers, and they all met here at Intellows, and we walked with the Coast Guard and all the other citizens. She's continued the partnership with Parkview Elementary School and some of the other things. So I, I was pleased to be there to thank her for her 30 months here and, and wished her well. And I also want to welcome Rear Admiral Terry Moulton, who's gonna be taking her place. Terry's just getting in here, and he seemed very excited, and we've made an appointment to get back together to talk about the Portsmouth family and how pleased we are with Navy Medical Portsmouth and, and its mission and how it, it plays in a larger perspective. And it was, I guess, timely or untimely of the incident that happened this morning. It was just before I was to go on the base, and I was just sharing with Elizabeth, when I pulled up, I thought maybe the president or some dignitary was there, because the police were over there, it was everything, and I had no idea of, of what had actually happened until I actually got on base and they informed me. But, but again, we want to wish her well, and it's extremely important, again, these commanders come in and understand how these bases fit in here in our city, and we understand their role and importance. And, and I think when I first met with Admiral Stocks and with Admiral Wagner when she came, the first thing they talked about was their cooperation and the collaboration with our police and fire departments and, and emergency personnel and how well that worked, and, and it showed today how well and how seamless that operation is. So anyway, I want to wish her well. With that, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that April the 16th through the 19th at Churchland High School will be the Portsmouth Invitational Basketball Tournament. You can get, they have a website, you can get tickets at the gate or on the website, and I know Malin and his team do a terrific job in attracting actually soon-to-be pros that'll be playing out there, and they also make a pretty significant contribution to the city following that tournament. That is real nice, but I believe they're probably in their 61st year of hosting that tournament here in Portsmouth, so wanted to mention that. On the equal pay issue, Mayor, speeches are nice, but I would suggest that we maybe consider putting something like that in our legislative package for the Commonwealth of Virginia. So maybe when that time comes, you and my colleagues will support it, along with our, hopefully our delegation will get behind it as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, actually, this morning, the governor actually signed a proclamation and, at the State Capitol proclaiming this day and, and supporting that whole initiative, so I'm sure we could be more than happy to do that bill. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 14-145, Report on Pending Items, Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on March 25th, 2014. There were nine non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on March 24th, 25th, 2014. Two of the speakers required action by staff. Vivi Edwards asked if the city would be sponsoring a summer shelter for the homeless. Currently, staff is reviewing the cost and feasibility of a shelter and will report their findings to City Council at an upcoming meeting. Conchale Devon asked if the city would provide ADA accessible swings to our current playgrounds. City Park and the Churchland Athletic Complex will have these swings installed in the next few weeks. The newly opened playground at JFK features several ADA components for children. This concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
14-146, Non-Agenda Speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Joe Wright, and he's followed by Mr. Clyde Toler.
Honorable Mayor Wright.
Sir.
Vice Mayor Cherry, Council members, Deborah White and her capable staff, City Manager, Mr. City Attorney Wilson, and good sergeant and on. My name is Joseph Paul Wright, 1451 Welcome Road, City of Portsmouth, Cavalier Manor Section. My main topic tonight is gonna be talking about veterans' benefits and what the city can do for them, specifically 100% disabled veterans that service-connected. We receive a letter from the Department of Veterans Affairs just about every year. I'm not gonna read this letter, but the part that I want you to hear is this letter is a summary of benefits you currently receive from the Department of Veterans Affairs. We are providing this letter to disabled veterans to use and apply for benefits such as housing entitlements, free or reduced state park annual memberships, state or local property or vehicle tax relief, civil service preference, or any other program or entitlement in which verification of VA benefits is required. Please safeguard this important document. America is grateful for you and your service. That leaves me to wonder, is Portsmouth grateful for our service? It was said that Portsmouth doesn't care anything about their veterans, but I do note that every Memorial Day, you do provide a viewing stand for us and give us some water from time to time, but we don't think that's enough. 100% veterans go through a lot, and there's not too many left, and that's why I don't think this would be a budget buster. You know, I know this is budget season, and if, if we could just get one more perk from the City of Portsmouth before we pass on to our maker, we would surely appreciate it, specifically personal property slash car tax. Now, I happen to check with all the other cities in the Tidewater area on this subject. The City of Chesapeake relieves their 100% disabled veterans from car tax slash personal property tax. The City of Norfolk and Virginia Beach, they reduce their veterans' car tax slash personal property tax. We're asking if it's any way possible that you could follow suit and don't be last in this action for the disabled veterans of this city. And on another subject, I missed the council meeting last time, but I heard Ms. Annette Franklin, and she happened to be here tonight, she, she gave an eloquent speech on the need for services to recovering drug addicts. And we, we call this building coming up a Metrodome Clinic, but it's not. It's a multi-building which includes relief for drug addicts. And I'd like to commend her at this time, because I remember when she was a drug addict. And I don't know anybody that's on drugs that wants to be on drugs. So as many people that we can help in this city, I would show, show appreciate it, as along with the veterans that we do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Let me first commend you for bringing that up. I actually was invited about two weeks ago over to the Post 190 in American Legion, and went Saturday about one o'clock, and there was about 100 veterans in there, and that was the topic. And they were from all over the region, and I'm glad you put those stats up, because we were kind of all over the place, the various cities, and would probably be nice that we kind of all aligned with what we're doing, and I know that'll take some effort, but it was Portsmouth, and I think, who was the other one? It was one other as bad as we were, and the other one.
Suffered.
Suffered, gave some other partial relief, and I was sitting there wondering why I was invited, but I think I knew why, and, but I do want to thank them for that invitation, and I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
We should look at that. Mr. Cherry.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, how you doing? You know, we had this conversation last week.
Yes, sir.
I just want you to know that, you know, Mr. Moody, Councilman Edmonds, and our all combat veterans, so.
Yes.
So we, we do love you as, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And I'm talking about elected people now.
I understand you are with Air Force, though. We didn't consider.
No, 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 no.
They came in later.
No, no, Mr. Rowan, our Army.
I know, I know, Mr. Rowan, he was in the real service.
We were, we were part of the mother's service. But, but we have had that discussion, and, and I don't know if we're gonna be able to do anything about this year. We do do some relief for real estate tax, but the personal property and the car tax, I can promise you, if we're still here, we were looking to try and do something about it in the years to come.
Right.
You forgot Bishop Edmonds over there. He was in the Air Force also.
Yeah, he's, he's getting ready to defend himself right now. Bitch.
I was in Vietnam doing Agent Orange. I don't know how, Mike Ack, brother. Better watch out.
All right, sir.
But I think that's a grandiose idea. 100% disabled vets in other cities are getting those types of relief. I think that's something that our city ought to consider. Even though I was in the Air Force, I still think we ought to consider it.
Now, those cities that I talked to, they said that although they exempted these people, they were reimbursed from somebody. I don't know from who. Maybe that's something else the manager can look into, you know?
But there's a reimbursement mechanism?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yep. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Clyde Toler, and he's followed by Mr. Peter Youngblood.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of Council, Mr. Rowan, and the attorney, good sign. Ms. White just said, "I noticed when you say you pay for all women, that's the first time I saw Ms. White eyes come up behind that thing." She's like, "Oh." Anyway, first, as Mr. Wright says, so I'm the granddad of all of them, 'cause I'm a World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. So anyway, I got this same letter, and I would like to see y'all do something for us too, because I came before you before, so you couldn't even get a hot dog or a cup of coffee in this city free, and that's a shame, the way you treat them. But I gave the city, Mr. Rowan there, I gave him a card. I would like for all the veterans of the City of Portsmouth, if you look at Channel 48, and if any of you in here go back and tell them to send Mr. Rowan their service, their data service, I'll make sure your honorable discharge there, and your data service and all this, and send it to him so we can get a count of how many veterans in this city. Now, if you want somebody to do something for you, and I'm saying this to the citizen of veterans, then get up off it and write him at 801 Crawford Street and just market City Manager, 'cause it ain't no one, he'll get it. Now, Mr. Rowan, I want to thank you very much for your outstanding job, and Mr. Moody, I want to give you praise, 'cause we don't need to be bringing up playing the race card. Now, I'm under praise, this council, because this year, you have really did good. You respect one another and everything. We are moving. We are moving forward, and everybody in the city is talking about this. But I'm sorry that you, other elected officials, this was no good, because I know every one of your peers' education, but it was said that all of you up here, council members, I came and I gave three big high words, and then none of them understand. Now, the mayor, I'm going to say, I ain't calling all names, but I'm going to say this to you because they called your name, said that you lied to the young teenager. You did not lie to her, but they said it was a shame that you lied to a 16-year-old teenager. Now, look, I'm saying this. I'm sick and tired of seeing the school board chairman come up here and be disrespectful, disrespect you like you are uneducated. This is totally wrong. You need to stop him from that. Hit that gavel on him. It's time for this to be stopped. We, the citizens, are getting sick of it, and people is talking about it all over the city, in Hampton. When I go to Miracle Legion meeting, I belong to all them, Fleet Reserve, BMW, disabled veterans, and they are talking about this, but I'm glad they ain't talking about this council no more. So you're doing a good job, but you need, Mr. Rowan, you done told them what's happening. Now, this ITT basketball game coming up, they tried for football. What happens to that money? Why don't you take that money and buy them kids' uniforms? Now, here this young teenager is out here, now who is she going to believe? You told her who to go to, she went to them. Then they call you a liar, and I said before, will a man lie? I said, yes, a man will lie, and so will a woman, and you heard that, too, right on that school boat. I'm not going to cut no corners. You can't say it because, see, you're elected official, see, I ain't elected to nothing. I'm just a private civilian. But I got to say to you, thank you for being so courteous, and this city is moving along, and Mayor, you showed up at a lot of things. I was in the back, you didn't see me today, but I saw you. And it's good that you was over at Naval Hospital. You somewhere everywhere. Used to be my paper boy, whether y'all know it or not, a long time ago, in '79, when I retired. Used to throw my paper down on the walk, and my wife came out all ugly, you know, got on him, so I think he threw it up on the porch from then on. But I knew his father when I came into fit. Mayor Wright and I and his pastor, we've been friends for a long time. But I want every veteran in this city to give Mr. Rowan, and Mr. Rowan, keep up the good works. You done told them where that money at. Stop arguing with the school board, drop the hammer on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. And just to follow up on that, and we'll be getting more on that. We had a Military Affairs Commission meeting the other day, and next year will mark, I believe, the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, and they were soliciting anybody, and they're going to come out with something formal, names of people that have participated or gave it all, and I think they had a list of about 40 names that they had, and so we're looking to do something next year in a larger fashion, but we're going to do something this year's parade to kind of preempt next year. But thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you very much. And my sister is here. She gave a real presentation. My sister is here again tonight. I went on her job, and I told her to come before she said she was going to come, she didn't, but she came last time, but I was sick and I couldn't come, but she here tonight. So great things is happening with her, and I appreciate how she done straightened up.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Peter Youngblood is followed by Mr. Rodrick Madison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Rowan. I'm Peter Youngblood. I live in Old Town, and I've talked to each of you on different topics before. Oddly enough, I got the same letter that these other gentlemen got, but I'm not going to talk about that tonight. We've already beat that to death. You know, I'm an old Army guy, so we believe in the bottom line up front, B-L-U-F. Bottom line is, I'm going to ask you to keep funding for our Mounted Patrol, our cop on the horse. I understand that the current budget cuts that line item out. I think it's a big deal, and I'll give you a couple of reasons why. I'm not going to belabor this a lot. Vice Mayor Cherry, when you were planning the Chairman of the Planning Commission, I'm sure that you recall that the character of a community is a valid planning consideration. It's a valid consideration for our quality of life, and the Mounted Patrol adds character to our five historic districts. It's something that we have that's unique. I know that when I see the Mounted Patrol going through our neighborhood, and I'm sure this happens in other neighborhoods, too, you feel good about it, you feel like you've got a real contact with the rider, and she also has a big imposing horse that could help catch crooks if they need to. Mr. Rowan, as a VMI graduate, I'm sure that when you were at VMI, you wore a uniform, and I believe they had ceremonial swords. I suspect that you didn't anticipate anybody attacking you on the parade field, but that sword was something that contributed to the character of being a VMI cadet. Once again, I come back to the Mounted Patrol here. It adds to the character of our city. Mayor Wright, you've seen the horses, you've been downtown, or the horse, you've been downtown, you've seen how it's a great crowd control item. It's a positive thing. People love to see that darn horse. They really do. We've, we already own the stable, we own the pasture, we own the big truck that hauls the horse around in his horse carriage. We spent the big bucks. We're not going to get those back. So what we're talking about cutting out is a very small amount of money. I think the amount was something like $10,000. It may be more than that. I haven't seen the figures, but it's really, in the big scheme of things, it's pretty small change. And I know money's tight. I can appreciate the fact that the police force has to take a hard look at their budget, and if they don't have it in their budget, I'd ask that y'all find it someplace else and put it back in their budget so we can keep it. I'll close by saying that my grandchildren love to see the horse, love to see the rider, and if you can't make this happen, I'm going to introduce you to my grandkids, and you can explain why. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Before you take your seat, I'm glad you came up, because I spoke about the 50th anniversary coming up next, but you spoke about character, and I want to get a plug-in for you specifically because we just appointed him to the Planning Commission, and probably within a month's time, we received a letter from a church here that talked about you going, they called it above and beyond, to come out and look at an issue that they had, and they were extremely grateful and thankful that you gave them that consideration.
Thank you, sir.
And you got to know, and I think Elizabeth and I was talking about, you got to know, when we get those kind of letters about people that volunteer and care about our city, it speaks to the character. And so as you talked about that subject, it brought to mind that compliment that we received on behalf of the church and what you did, so-
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
I really do. And now, could you straighten out what I said about the 50th anniversary? What are we trying to do this year, and what's the list we're trying to accumulate?
We have a list now of, I believe it's 41 KIA's from Portsmouth during the 10 years of the Vietnam conflict. We don't know how many other veterans we have in Portsmouth. We would like to honor all of them because the 50th is coming up in '15. We're getting a jump start this year. We're going to start off in 2014 and have a ceremony after our Memorial Day Parade, and we would like to encourage all of the Vietnam-era veterans, heck, veterans from any other era, to come down and be part of that. This is, if I may be so humble as a Vietnam veteran, this is the parade we did not get. And I can tell you that it's a big deal. It really is. There are many, many Vietnam veterans who harbor a deep sense of regret or maybe even resentment because we didn't get a parade. We got kicked off the plane and said, find your way home, and we don't want to talk about it. And so Mr. Rowan can appreciate, well, a number of you can. So we would like to make this into a big deal, and it'll continue on in 2015 and 2016. I think that there are some 2,000 cities, I may be wrong on the number, who have applied to be partners in this venture, and I know Norfolk is doing something, and I'm not sure about Virginia Beach. I suspect they'll be doing something, but we're getting a jump start on them.
Okay.
Does that answer all your questions?
Absolutely, and thank you very much. Thank you for your service, too.
Thank you, sir.
And we'll work on that horse. Tell the grandkids, just hold tight. Thanks, Peter.
Mr. Rodrick Madison, and he's followed by Mr. Mark Godalde-Kutrowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm here representing the Friends of Portsmouth Juvenile Courts, and I wanted to speak briefly about the pinwheel ceremony we held yesterday at the Ambassador Club. Ms. Simmons was there, Mayor Wright, and Vice Mayor Cherry was there as well. Pinwheel prevention is to recognize that child abuse happens. April is designated National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we, the City of Portsmouth, along with Friends of Portsmouth Juvenile Courts, want to recognize and be the voice of those children being abused. Typically, you know, we think of abuse as physical abuse, but children are being verbally abused, which can be more long-term than physical abuse. So it's our job to be their voice and be their allies to ensure that we're paying attention to certain behaviors, because it could be from abuse and not necessarily physical abuse, but verbal abuse. The city did make a proclamation that the month of April, we'll be recognizing the City of Portsmouth, and we thank you for that as well. And some of the statistics that were given were, every 85 minutes, a child is abused or neglected in Virginia. Between July 2012 and June 2013, 6,205 Virginia children were victims of child abuse. On average, there are 4,458 children in foster care in Virginia, and every seven days, a child aged 19 or younger is murdered. Preventing child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility that depends on the comprehensive community involvement. So again, I thank the council members for coming out and representing the city at the pinwheel ceremony. IC Norcom appears to be the spearhead. Their pinwheel garden was bigger than the one we planted at the Ambassador Club. The senior class raised over $1,500 for the child abuse prevention campaign. So again, I thank you all, and let's continue to be the voice for our children.
And that's for the second year in a row, IC Norcom has showed up and showed out, and that's very good, one, from the educational perspective to those high school kids, but two, that they put their spirit team to work and rally behind something that's vitally important to not only our community, but our nation. But I want to commend you also on your keynote speaker yesterday, a young man from the Virginia Pilot, Roger Chesley, spoke and did a very good job, and you did a good job introducing him, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mark Godalde-Kutrowski, and he's followed by Ms. Kentrell Devon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. And aside, there must be another Navy veteran in this room, aside from me. I want to propose a grand bargain, and I want to ask all of you to reflect on this. I would like you to say nothing about it tonight because it's coming to you out of the blue, and I find the government works best when it works deliberately. So no spur of the moment, off-the-cuff responses. This is a concept, not fully fleshed out, and it would be improved immeasurably by some good legal counsel, which you are fortunate to have, and some accounting expertise, budgeting and accounting expertise as well. One of the perennial problems that the school board has had from a financial standpoint, and I've spoken to you about this piece before, is the fact that they have no general fund. There is no fund balance to back them up, which means that every year, they receive an appropriation from the city as well as funding from the Commonwealth and the federal governments, and at the end of the year, they're supposed to end with nothing in the account. Well, I don't drive Alamo rental cars because they start you out with a partial tank of gas, and you're supposed to turn the car in as empty as possible. There's no safety net. If you are trying to get your money's worth out of that deal, then you may end up on the back of a tow truck because you pressed it to the limit. And unlike Alamo car rental drivers, the school board could end up in jail if they run over what you've allotted to them. Since the Commonwealth has not given them control over their own budget in terms of being able to carry a fund balance, why not the city? When the school board, when the school system ends up with a surplus at the end of the year, why not have the city set that aside in an account from which the board can draw for subsequent expenses so that they then have a cushion, as the city does, as the Commonwealth does, as Mark and Ulla Godalde-Kutrowski have for our own household budgets? And that would be money that is designated for them to use. It would go through the appropriation process that's mandated by law, but you would be holding that for them to draw on, and then they'd be in a position to make more efficient use of the regular appropriation. The other points that go along with this, Mr. Rowan has advocated that the school system go to self-funding for health care for their employees. Let the city make a guarantee to the board that you will indemnify them against loss. This could be with surplus funds from the last fiscal year, so that they are off the hook in terms of, well, what if this doesn't, what if this doesn't turn out, and we end up with a bigger liability? There will be a cushion. There will be a soft landing. That may help move them off the dime. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And to honor your request of not speaking now tonight, I'll do that, but I've got plenty to say on that subject next time. Thank you.
Following Ms. Devon is Ms. Antonette Franklin.
Greetings. My name is Kentrell Devon. I reside in Newport. Mr. Mayor, Bishop, Lady Randall, Lady Elizabeth, Page Cherry, well, Councilman Page Cherry and Councilman Bill Moody, and Mr. Rowan. I am here tonight, as always, standing on behalf of the youth, but I have to start off by saying thank you, Mr. Mayor. You did a wonderful job representing the ladies. That's always wonderful to have a leader who speaks on behalf of women, so thank you for that. And just a tad bit to piggyback off of that, you know, we have some teachers, the higher you go, their pay is not as pretty as those that walk in the door, so, you know, we can fix that because the ladder needs to be strong from the base all the way to the top, so maybe that's something you can look into as you advocate for the ladies, just an idea, you know, teachers' salaries, just remember that. Secondly, I'm here to say thank you because we have asked and asked and asked for many years that- years that the surrounding water in front of Newport property be cut down and beautified somewhat, and this year we finally had someone who listened. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, because every chance we got, we was in your ear. Thank you, City Manager, and everyone else who participated on making sure Newport really can enjoy the jewel of our neighborhood. So thank you again. I want to say thank you to the Parks and Recs Department because I really teared up when I found out those, that our handicap babies will be able to enjoy the swings when they go out there. They acted right away, so thank you again, Ms. Thorne, I appreciate that. And for the reason that I'm here also is I'm on the library board, and I found out that we have a online service that our many parents do not know about that can help our children, and we can use all of our resources to get this out. And what is called Homework Help. I'm going to pass out the information, if you don't mind. I'm going to pass this out, and if you would, could you give it back to me? Because I know you all get a lot of information, so I'm going to give it to you now, but I'm going to give it back. I need it back so I can pass it out throughout the community. And it's a Homework Help service, and it's where children who are struggling from third grade to 12th grade in math, reading, and writing, they can go online from the library home or school, and they can get a teacher that will assist them in all of these areas, and it's a live teacher. And I feel like if we connect this information somehow to the internet, our internet services with the Portsmouth branch, I mean, the Portsmouth website, churches, they need to have it. A lot of churches, we have educational programs in our schools, in our churches. We honor the children who make honor roll. However, this service could help a lot of children come up in their grades, and it's free. So they just have to have a library card, and I think this is wonderful. I would love to see it if it would be on our China 48 as well, that people would know that this is out there. And again, put it in church bulletins because it's free of service, and all they have to have is a library card and internet services somewhere. So I think we need to get this out into our community in the hands of youth pastors, educational leaders, even our school system. Wherever we can get this information, we need to post it so we can see our grades go up, SOL testings, and there's other sites that we offer throughout the library system that helps as well with GED help, eval testing. It's a lot of testing things that they have that we can, like I said, connect all of the services, all of our resources together, and pull our schools up and bring them where we want them to be as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Very good.
Ms. Antoinette Franklin is followed by Ms. B. Jacqueline Williams.
Good evening to City Council. My name is Antoinette Franklin, and like I said when I was here before, I am a productive citizen of Portsmouth. I came to speak on behalf of Behavior Healthcare Services. Like I said before, that building just doesn't house people on methadone. It services people with mental health, substance abuse problems, a whole wide area of different things. And like I said before, I'm a product of that building. Only thing I want to do is get the word out that the different services that they offer, you know, I come in contact with like Carl Edmonds, Elaine Brethwaite, you know, they, they often see me downtown. I visit these areas because it's a need for that building. I can't stress it enough that if it had not been for that building, even the one they're getting ready to build, a lot of people would still be on the streets. You know, I just happen to have a made-up mind not to go out and use anymore. I have no desire, never will, and I could promise the City Council, you'll never see me back out on the streets. Mr. Wright and Mr. Reggie, they seen me when I was skinny as lead. I think I like being pleasingly plump. But only thing I want to do is be an example to the community, to let them see that if I can do it, anybody can. I don't want to see, I have eight grandchildren. I have two great-grandchildren. I can be a grandmother, a great-grandmother, and an example for those that are still out there struggling. Nobody wants to be out there on them streets, but if you have the services offered, then they can seek help for those that want to seek help. You know, because of what I learned through those programs, I open up a substance abuse meeting on Monday nights. When I'm allowed through my work schedule, I visit other programs. Most of them are faith-based. You know, only thing, I just want to see this city of Portsmouth help those that are out there struggling. There's, there's so many things that I could speak about as far as the building. You know, it's a lot of help out there, but you just have to want to help. I, like I said before, I can ask people to, on a show of hands, how many people in here have used those services? And I probably won't get five. And like I said, I am one of those, I pay taxes. I chose, I came from New York. I chose to live in this city of Portsmouth. I've been here 38 years and some change, and I have no desire to go back there. This is home for me, and I want Portsmouth to be known as home for me. My children were raised here, my grandchildren live here. Let this be a wonderful city that people will have the desire to come to. And if I get a chance, you know, I'd like to let other people know the same thing. This is a nice place to live. If I could leave New York and come here, anybody can. And this, it's a nice city. They offer a lot. You just have to want to seek those things that they offer. With that, I end.
Yes, ma'am. You know, there's a saying here in Portsmouth, if you can make it here, you can make it anywhere. Thank you, ma'am. Good night. Oh, Ms. Randall?
Ms. Franklin, come back, sweetheart.
Yes, ma'am.
I had to call you back because this is a lady who walked a walk that could have led to destruction, and she found a brighter path. And not only did she come through it, but in her jaw, because I visit the place where she works, and I want you to know, she spreads the word wherever she is, and she gives her services with a smile. You are witness, a true witness, because you can testify about what it's like. So you can understand what those who are out there having problems are going through.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate the fact that even on your jaw, you talk the talk, you walk the walk, but you practice what you teach, and I commend you. You're just a marvelous example of someone who started in one direction and changed direction, and you're making a difference
Yes, ma'am.
With the people that you are touching on your jaw. And I just had to say it, I was just so impressed to be in your presence.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night. Good, Ms. Randall? Very good.
Ms. B. Jacqueline Williams is followed by Ms. Elvira Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, Bishop Edmund, all other council members. I am here on behalf of the Rec, Multicultural Recreation Center. I know the city has put up playgrounds in the Douglas Park area, over on Elliot Avenue, and they're soon to have one in, in Cavalier Manor. But I have visited those playgrounds more than once. It has been raining, no children. You can't get to the playground because it's full of mud and wa, standing water. Now, do you want your children or your grandchildren to go out and play in the rain, in the mud, and come back home and dirty up your house for your wife to, and husbands to say, uh, you know, this is where my children have to play? I don't think so. I have grown children, but I do have grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I have no place for them to play. If we had a multicultural center, I could send them there. I could go there with them, watch them, they do their little thing, I do mine, because that multicultural center will have different things in there to do. Computers, crocheting, whatever. It will be, have a lot of things to do besides a play park that you can't play in, in the rain. You can't be out there in this hu, uh, hot sun, because if you do, one of those little children is going to get sick. They're going to have a heat stroke. Is there going to be anybody there to take them to the, uh, emergency room? I don't think so. The people that's going to be there are going to have to call 911. Then you got a $500 bill from Douglas Park to Maryview Hospital. I know because I, my sister, my daughter couldn't wake me up one day, and that's why I wind up with a $500 bill from my house, which is around the corner from Douglas Park and Acadia Heights, to Maryview. And I like the hat, uh, fit. I'm not going to say what kind of fit, but I like the heady fit when I got the bill. And I wanted to know, where did they take me to? They had to go all the way around Portsmouth, go over to Norfolk, and come back to get me to Maryview for the charge $500 for a five-minute ride. So I don't think so. I don't think your children want to be out there. Yes, it's nice. It looks pretty, but not in the rain, not in the mud. Now, I mostly wear white tennis shoes. Can you see me wearing white tennis shoes, walking out in the rain, in the mud, to play? Yes, I do go out there because I think it's fun. I'm old now, and I be doing crazy things now. I go out there just to see if I can do some of this stuff because my great-grandchildren are going to come and say, Grandma, come on, do this with me. So I have to do it before they get here so that I won't, they don't show me up when they do get here. I had to learn how to play these games, these game boards and all this other stuff before they, Grandma, play this with me. I don't know how. I can't do that. But I can go to a multicultural center and show them how to do some of the things that Grandma know how to do. They're still teaching me how to work on a computer, and my smartphone is too smart for me, but they're still teaching me how to do it. So please, City Council, you got money for everything else here. At least start working on the multicultural center. Maybe we can have another fundraiser or something to help. I know we'll be able to help furnish the place after you get in there because there's a lot of old computers around, a lot of old game boards still around, a lot of things that we can do once that building is there. You got money, do everything else. Please find some money to put over in the old Truxton site for us to have a multicultural center for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Following Ms. Johnson is our final speaker, Mr. Eric Watford. Sir, she's going to speak first.
Follow.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Elvira Johnson. I reside in the North Truxton area. I represent Wilson Ward and some of our greatest commodities in this city, our children and our seniors. Ms. Williams spoke about the multicultural center, and I know you've already done your budgeting and all this other good stuff, but you're still going to see me. I promise you that. I'm not going nowhere. I might not come up here every other Tuesday, but I'll be there working on your nerves, I promise. I told you all before, I'm not going to rest until I feel this building up with a lot of folks. But something told me the other day, maybe you need to take a different tactic. So let me try this. Why are we up here fighting for our children? And my children are grown with children. I would like to ask the parents of these children that we're fighting for, where are you? You want what I want for your children? If you do, you need to show me, because council need to see that when I speak, I'm not the only voice. They need to look behind me and see this place filled up with parents that care about their children. Because if they don't know it, I'd be the first one to tell them. It's their children that's going to end up taking care of them, which is why I love my seniors, seasoned seniors. I'm a senior. Love it. For those of us that have parents, we have to take care of our parents. What I see in my mind in this multicultural slash rec center is the children reading to the seasoned seniors. The seasoned seniors talking about glory's past. Everybody win, they win. It's a win-win. It's no way they can fail. And then I try to figure out what happened to the money that was set aside. And I listened to the news and I heard this woman from GM say, mm, I wasn't there when they had this mishap, but I'm here now and I'm going to try to fix it. Counsel, can you do that? I just wonder. Y'all got the $5 million. I want to know where it went. Did you use that to help build the Behavior Healthcare Center over here? And don't think you're snowballing me, because I can see it. You got your little recreation centers out there and everything cute, real cute, don't get me wrong. That sun is shining. Is your child going to go out there and get sunburned, Mr. Moody? I guess not. Mine ain't. And who said or asked me, could they use my taxpayer dollars to fix up some gym out there in Charleston that our children can't use? I got so much on my mind, Lord, I don't have enough time. But I can tell you this, you might not give me this multicultural center this year, you might not even give it to me next year, but as God is my witness, you will give it to these children, because we need it. These children need it. These senior citizens need it. I need it. The school system needs help. Y'all don't want to be in the school, so put a label in there. You love these children? Show it. Because you getting old. Your grandchildren going to read to you. Your baby's going to read to you, and you going to get tired of sitting in that house, and you going to get that ta, that handicap to come and get you and carry you somewhere so you can be with somebody else other than them four walls. I'm not threatening. That's a promise. You don't get younger, you get older. It's just that simple. So let's let the little ones teach us, middle ones teach the older ones, teach us, and come on back down the line. You think maybe that can happen? Because that's what this is all about. It's about saving this city that's under this dome, living by itself, because you have no help coming from nobody else. Now, on that note, I want everybody to be happy, be blessed. Easter Sunday is my daughter's birthday, and I want everybody in here to send up some prayers for James Overton, because I say his heart is on the way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well done.
Mr. Watford, you can come forward.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I join you all from Tappahannet, Virginia. I am a native of Portsmouth, Virginia, graduated IC Norcom, and I'm a veteran of United States Army. But what I want to speak about is in brief, we talk about duty, which every soldier knows, whether Navy, Army, Coast Guard, Air Force, it doesn't matter. And that duty is to this city. But let me tell you about the duty of Portsmouth Police Department and my family. The Mounted Patrol, as a youth growing up here in Lincoln Park, a hardhead, saved my life. And I found out online that you plan on doing away with that Mounted Patrol, and I left my job to come down here to speak just against that. You guys did a marvelous city since I moved away. The officers who did the dare program, the same officers who rode those horses in the parades, the same officers who rode and fed many of other families. I owe them a duty to speak on their behalf, and I want to thank this city for forming such a beautiful unit. To do away with that unit is to say that their program didn't mean nothing to me because I don't do drugs. To take that unit away, to say that I shouldn't even attended Brighton Elementary School. To take that unit away is to also take away the dreams of children who is underprivileged, who is underprivileged, who look at that animal with awe because they never seen nothing like it. All we see is guns, violence, drugs, and any effective, and it, it's too much. It's just too much emotion. But what I'm saying to you today, I'm asking you that there are other ways to save this unit that are cost-effective. We have a lot of land in this city, and I've done my research. I have a degree in engineering, both civil and machine. And I'm telling you, this school board, this city has made opportunities, and I'm asking you to look at the land that you have, look at the resources available, and look at the free manpower you have at the city compound to help offset the keeper of this animal by growing its food. I will volunteer my time, my mindset, and my resource. I will volunteer my time, my mindset, and my resource, and those who I employ in Tappahannet to help you meet this goal. But please do not do away with this unit. I ask you, keep that horse bow. I just went over there the other day to help clean him. You know, so keep him, keep the officers, maintain what you do. This is a lovely city. The train just blew my mind. It just blew my mind. But I thank you all, and you did a great job. So, you guys have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Watford. Ms. Randall?
After listening to the speaker and the things that you've had to say, you've reached the hearts of many of us that are in here. I think about the senior population and the previous speakers about the activities that are needed in our communities. I commend you for keeping forth in your vision for the city that you want equal opportunities and facilities for our young people all over the city. That's your push, and I know where you're coming from, and I can understand the importance of maintaining their heritage from the past and maintaining that which brought dignity to the city by seeing the mounted officers on the patrol horses as they came through the city. We can bring all the new we want about in the city, but unless we treasure and keep the past and the generation that will tell it like it was for the young generation that follows, there is no tomorrow for the city, because the day is not going to always be here. Yesterday, we cannot recapture, and tomorrow is not promised to us. But I think if we put it all in perspective and say we are truly the Portsmouth family, we can bring it together into a plan where everybody can realize their dreams for the city and their wishes for the generations that will follow after us. But if we lose sight and focus on just this moment in time, we can kiss tomorrow goodbye and forget about yesterday, because nobody's going to be here to carry the message. And I'm not preaching, I'm just telling you a fact of life. And I think we need to focus on where we are going, but don't forget from whence we came and the road we had to travel to get to where we are today, to plan for where we want to go tomorrow. And I just had it in my heart to say it, because sometimes we dwell so much in the present, we forget that there was ever a yesterday or there will be a tomorrow. And we know according to the Word, there was a yesterday, there is a today, and only who knows what tomorrow has stored for us. And I just had to get it off my mind. I'm sorry it's in my heart, and I just had to say it.
Thank you. Well done.
God bless you.
All right. Thank you. With that, we're going to adjourn, but don't forget, Saturday morning, we're going to pretty this city up, get your trash bags and your sticks and wands and meters down here. We adjourn.